...tonight, we will have, the council will have an opportunity to discuss the, my recommendation related to Waterside on the 5th, and we set aside some time tonight, if there are some specific questions that you would like for us to gather in preparation of that meeting, I could save it for last, and we could do hurricane preparedness, or we could go into it right now, it's whatever, it's the pleasure of the council.
Well, let's do it now, because we're scheduled to 5th.
Right.
And for the council's benefit, I mean, I thought we want to not schedule anything else that day, so we could just focus on this, but I thought it'd be a good idea with talking with the manager, if we had some special concerns or some information, special information, we may not have much, but if there is some, that we want to get out on the table, so we can hit it before that, before that meeting, then this would be an appropriate time to ask if you had any questions, or, you know, we can go around the table, we can raise our hands, or we can do what you want to.
This would be with us and Cordish?
Yeah.
With discussions we make.
Right, right.
I think, I think the, for me, the key issues are going to be a lease, the lease term is significant, to know what the term is, payments, what the payments would be, how they would be structured. Can I go on, Paul?
Sure, sure.
Do you mind? You had mentioned also something about some credits, I'm curious what credits they're seeking, I think that was mentioned at some point, when you had mentioned Cordish. I think that, I've seen the pictures of restaurants and things, but what else besides restaurants and bars would be placed within Waterside itself? And, third, there's, I've seen the number 12 to 13, but in reality, is that, Marcus, is that really something that's realistic? Meaning, is it better to start with three, or four, or five, a legitimate number that appears legitimate to us, and then moving on and expanding from there? And then what would they do with the remainder of the facility, if you only start with three, four, or five restaurants? What else would they do? Also, would they seek, and I've been online and looked at, was it Pike's Place, which really appears to be a shopping mall to me, from what I saw online, but what else would they plan on integrating, and I may have asked you this, such as, you know, the mention of a fish market, is that viable? A farmer's market, is that viable, in that area? I think also, we need to consider ourselves parking, do we, if we expect people to come downtown, we may want to discuss amongst ourselves, I don't know if this is for Cordish or not, but perhaps a Waterside garage after, let's say, 6:00 PM, no fee, something to that effect, or we recoup it back through somehow, through sales within Waterside themselves, Waterside itself. I don't remember seeing anything about the marina, and would they, in particular, would there be restructuring of the marina? And if so, what would be, or what would be their study or focus on capturing, because I can tell you, I watched the yachts come through, the inner, our own Inner Harbor, and as they come through, they, a lot of them just go right past us. What would they seek to capture that business? Would they contemplate, let's say, putting a West Marine, or that type of a facility within Waterside, that allows access to boaters and yachts? I mean, those are just off the cuff, things that I've talked and mentioned to others.
Are you going to leave anything for us to bring up?
Sorry. But, I mean, I've been, I've been holding it in, Tom. I finally let it out, man.
That was good, that was good, you covered everything I wanted to hear.
But, I think that the, those lease terms, going back to the beginning, I mean, I think the lease is, is really the financial significance of the deal, and, you know, term is significant, cost is significant, and I'm going to use, for lack of a better term, and I apologize to city attorney, but the recapture of it, if there is no, if there's no performance, how, if, or if the performance lacks projected, you know, are the projections part of the lease, or is that a separate exhibitor document that's not considered part of the lease? And if it's not, then what recapture do we have as a remedy? Or what, what remedies would exist short of recapture, or taking the property back over, that they would in turn pay us, perhaps? So, you know, there's a certain fee that we may amortize over time, so it's just those types of issues, and I apologize, those are, I was holding, I'm glad I was first to get, and if I think of the others that I had in my head, I'll, I'll let you know, and I hope that...
Marcus, would the marina be a part of that? Because you've got a separate RFP out on the street, so I don't think they would be a part of that, but...
We do have a separate RFP on the street, I'd hope that, in the discussions, though, that if it is something that, you know, makes sense?
We should have a vision from them on, even if it's a separate...
But they would still, we'd still want them to house a store.
They should have their vision on what it would be.
We'd still want them to house some kind of a store, or something that caters to, what a term I just learned, snowbirds.
Right.
You know, that, how do we get, they bypass our area, but how do we get them to come in, if we have some kind of shops in there that cater to our boaters?
It's actually beyond just shops, it's also facilities.
Facilities.
Right, that's why I mentioned the West.
Showers.
There have been, there are issues with the storing of gasoline in that location, too, I understand, but Marcus, in their proposal, didn't they say they wanted to control the marina?
Well, I would say that...
I mean, in their written, didn't they, didn't they absolutely say? I don't know who else is... Yes, yes, okay. So, they, in their proposal, written proposal, was, they said it was necessary for them to control the marina, and so, I think, I take it that's a matter for discussion and debate?
It will.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, the only thing that I've been advocating was the total sale of the property minus the marina, see if they're interested in, you know, figure out how much it would, you know, sale would be, and ask them if they want to buy it. That gets us out of it, and they, they'll just be paying us taxes for it, when it gets us out of it, so they can give us a, you know, a good piece of change, for whatever it's worth. And we'd just be out of that business, we'd never have to worry about it again.
Mark, you want in?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm in favor of selling it, I think that's something we can discuss. My big concern is, whatever they put in there, it brings new money in, it doesn't dilute what's already downtown, what's already been spent in our city. I want a reason, and I don't know what that is, for people just in Suffolk, Virginia Beach, whatever, to say, let's go to Norfolk tonight.
Great question.
That's, you know, we've got a lot of people that sweat blood down our Grammy Street, built up restaurants and businesses, what have you, we don't want to dilute what they've got, I want another, you know, I want an attraction, I guess. How they do that, they're the pros, I'm not, so that's my big concern.
Let me just say one thing, you know, I've heard the concern about diluting Grammy Street, but what comes to my mind is Collie Avenue, 21st and 22nd Street, already diluting Grammy Street.
Well, some thought, I mean, I'm not sure, some thought that it helps, but, you know...
That's what our consultant said.
Does what?
That it would help, you know, that it would bring new, new people in, and then they would go to the Grammy Street.
But the big point is getting new, new people, however that works.
I don't know that we had a consultant say that, I think, he did a survey in downtown.
No, the consultants that he has to look at both Cornish and to look at the other one, felt that it was not going to be...
Okay. Is that correct?
They'll be on the bit also, their concept is that market share, and we would capture a bigger piece of market share, but again, Dana will be on the bit.
You know, I think Andy is, is pretty much, my concern is our liability, that if this doesn't work, and if businesses fail, or if this fails, you know, just to clarify that for me, and then, I, I don't think the city should be in the business of deciding necessarily what this looks like, but I don't know if we want to just give up all responsibility to them about what type of restaurants they're choosing. I, I'm very concerned about not having some local businesses, and, and not just looking like another town center.
Marcus, and Anthony, I know you've got a lot of stuff, but I, but included in this, and Bernard, I guess I'm talking to you, but it's all, of any, of any discussion we have, or deal we strike with them, would be a land disposition, which would set forth certain parameters in it, that would address just what you talked about, and there would all be, you know, I mean, the size, the scope, the look, I mean, you know, you can tighten that stuff pretty well down, and still give them enough room to, you know, to be entrepreneurs. We were able to do that years ago, we're actually at, you know, with the MacArthur Center, some things, we required certain first-class, what was considered a first-class facility, we were able to reference other facilities around the country, that we expected this to look like, that we had certain benchmarks, it can get pretty sophisticated by what you want, so it's, I mean, we'll have to keep our eyes wide open, and make sure we get the highest quality.
That's kind of like what I'd like to know, what you would, would recommend that we have those types of...
Yes, we have those standards.
Like, over at the MacArthur Center, they couldn't go down there, for instance, and get a, you know, I don't know what would be, like a Dollar Tree, and put it up as a, as a, as a third pad, or something like that, there were only certain stores that we would permit to go on a third pad, and that's pretty well decided, so. All right, Strice, Bernard?
Excuse me, one thing, just to piggyback on what you just said, I know that they would go through a process with the community, so the community would drive it, and they were very explicitly saying that, that the community will drive, they would come in and have these conversations with the community, in terms of what they want to see, and they thought it was very important to have the local flavor, so they would piggyback on those things that are important to this community, as well as to the region, so that would be a part of that process, that they would go through. They wouldn't just come in and say, we want to bring this, 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 there's an orientation that they go through, again, just like we went through with the surveys and meetings, and so, that, that's the piece that I, that gave me some comfort, because they were going to embrace the community, not just come in here and decide what's going to be, what they thought was good, you know, again, at the end of the day, they wanted to work, but my question is, has nothing to do with that, you heard me talk about that all day long, but my question is, you know, we talked about, me and the mayor, we talked about this some time ago, about Grammy Street, and we keep talking about, how do we reinvigorate Grammy Street? And, you know, I know we have the, the, what is it called?
Urban Outfitters.
Urban outfitters that's coming, but we have to do something to the streetscape of Grammy Street, and we've talked about, we need to create, Grammy Street needs to be a destination, we talked about the lights on every lamppost, you know, you go down there at night, and you've got some trees lit up, some trees not lit up, some of the, the treatments around the trees are done, some are not done, there's no consistency, and so, in order to, you know, for Grammy Street to come alive, it needs to be a destination, so it would be nice, I don't know why, or what, what impediment, you know, stopping us from putting the lights on the trees, that would at least give it a destination, where people come downtown, they say, wow, okay, it's well lit, it looks good, you know, and then people start to kind of filtering, you know, in and around Grammy Street, to see what's there, but, you know, we have to make some effort, it's just not going to do it by itself, and the people that own restaurants there have made a significant investment, but again, I think that we have a part to do, in that, in terms of making it a destination, so. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Anthony?
Yeah.
Anthony's short of his talk.
I'm going to see what's through.
Trying to get move to Angelo, which is...
I just want to make sure that it is, you know, it's an attractive place, it's an attraction, that doesn't doubt, you know, that actually, I'm a bar lady, that it attracts new people, it brings in new money, people who would not ordinarily come here, I think the parking after six or seven, or whatever time, free parking, I think that's a great idea, some of the financial, I see Daryl over there having a fit, I see his head moving, but...
Just keep it the one garage that's right across the street.
Right, it is an attract, to have free parking somewhere.
Right.
Near Waterside is, is attractive, it is attractive, you know, I mean, in town center, it's free all day, all night, whenever you want to go.
They don't have light rail.
Yeah, well, that's true, and that's, that's true, too, but I mean, after six or seven, or whatever the time is, or maybe, if it's not free, maybe, you know, a dollar, two dollars, I mean, just some flat fee.
On the way coming in.
Right, that you know what you're going to pay, and, and, you know, and that's it, but whatever it is, I just want it to be profitable to the city, I want the citizens, have said they want to remain family friendly, and if I'm not mistaken, I think the citizens have also said that they wanted us to maintain some kind of control over it, so I'm not in favor of selling it, I think that would be a short-term fix, with short-term money, I think that if they're going to invest 28, 29 million dollars, they have skin in that game, that they are going to want to see a return on their investment, and I don't think, I could be wrong, but I just don't think they're going to let it flop with 28, 29 million dollars invested in that, in that property, so, that's, that's my two cents.
I agree with what everybody said, I want to, I mean, by the time it gets to me, I want to add on to the parking situation, I think that that is a detriment from, for people to go downtown and use Waterside, I think you could even add in, if you purchase a meal at one of the restaurants, that you get your parking validated, that way you can, you know, somehow tell the difference between somebody who's going down there for something else, and, you know, maybe, like we do at the movie theater, it's reduced down to 50 cents at MacArthur, if you, you know, go to the movie, but something like that, that's an incentive, because I think that that's one of the attractive things to the restaurants down in town center, in Virginia Beach. Also, I would like to see how we connect this to Harbor Park, and how do you get people to walk from the light rail station at Harbor Park to Waterside, and that they can feel safe walking from there, because, or even from the, this light rail station right outside here, how do you connect light rail to Waterside, whether it's a pathway that specifically leads people from there to Waterside, that's lit up, or better landscaped, I don't...
The MacArthur Center station has a direction line to Waterside.
Right, well, I don't know whichever one's closer, but finding a way to make it connect that way, and also, I think somehow tying the cruise terminal into this, you know, when people come into town, you know, one of the big things we've talked about is that parking for the cruise terminal is at Cedar Grove, maybe there should be some designated parking at this parking garage for cruise terminal parking, so that when they park their cars, they can go spend some dollars at Waterside, before they go on the cruise, and, you know, something connected to that, but we have to make it work that way as well, and the more that you do that, the more popular it gets, more people start talking about it, and creates a better environment. I like the marina stuff, we, I think we've got to find a way to hook that in, I think we get bypassed from talking to some boaters, we get bypassed quite a bit, because we don't have anything to offer, and how do we get them to just go down here, and spend one night here, and spend money, and provide showers, if that's what they want, or if there's, you know, other shops.
That has to be understood as a destination for them.
Yeah.
Because they blow right past.
Right, yeah.
And...
I think even Hampton might be getting more of that than we are.
I mean, we haven't invested in that marina, I can't remember the last time we put, where is Stanley? Stanley was going to fix it years ago, and even, even he...
We put in some showers, and the washing, and the Waterside itself for them, we also redid all the boards and everything, and redid the lighting.
Right, that's it. Marcus, just a couple of things, I know, I think it's all been well said, there's about a $4 million note on the property, I would expect them to, you know, to relinquish, to extinguish that note. I would expect that the lights will be on during the daylight, as well as, I mean, it has to be attractive to families, there has to be things going on in there during the day, especially for people to come and stay in our hotels, or on the conference center that we've talked about, I mean, it has to be a complement to what's going on in downtown, not just be seeing, you know, that sort of, at an island out there, because there was a point with Waterside, when we started the second makeover of Waterside, it just sort of became a, it didn't work with anything else, and I don't know how you do that exactly, but I mean, it needs to work, I mean, Anthony mentioned Grammy Street, but I think it also needs to work with our hotels, and somebody proposed having some space in there, that people could rent out, small, I mean, groups of 50 or 60 people, like for banquets or something, I think that would be, and I want to get the conference center business over there, but something like that, I think would be a great amenity, where if somebody was staying in a hotel, that they could go across the street, you know, use some of that space, and, you know, look out on the water, and, you know, maybe somebody, you know, just bring everybody who's in a conference over there, or something, it can be, it can be a complement to what we want to do, but I, the public realm, how the public walks around the space, how they enter the space, how, I mean, I think that's really important, that we don't over, overdevelop the site, and I think, I've said this before, I think this might be one instance where we sort of underpromise the community and overdeliver, I mean, Anthony and Andy started off with three or four restaurants, it's much easier to build those things, if they're successful, than it is to start out with a dozen or 13, and then start trying to back it down when it's not, we did that with the old Waterside, it started off full, little by little, it just emptied out. I think, in the original proposal, they were talking about opening up the middle of Waterside, I think that would be really a great idea, I mean, I wouldn't be offended if they wanted to take down part of Waterside, like the addition, and create, that was put on many, many years ago, and, you know, just create some more open space out there, or maybe another small amphitheater or something, where people could gather, or, I mean, I think if they really, and plus, they could get enough critical mass to make the thing work, which, I mean, I want to make sure that they, I'm not trying to send a message that it shouldn't, there has to be a certain critical mass for them to make the numbers work right, and I don't want to, you know, tell them how to do that, because that's in their business, but at the same time, I want to be very careful that it's, that everybody feels like they're welcome there, at the same time, night and day.
Are they open, or do we know, are they open to, I had to step out, but I heard you talking about, like a, a small Whole Foods, or, or produce shop, or maybe a chocolatier, like maybe a Cadiba, or a Brookstone, or something like that, that is not just the restaurants, but if you have people staying at the Marriott, or you have them staying at the Sheridan, they're going to come over for something special, we've got some of the little specialty stores, I think, that are still there, that do the Virginia featured kind of items, and, I mean, just something that you may not find everywhere.
Sure, that's, that's not what they do, it's an entertainment venue.
But I think they do need to be marina sensitive, and they need to understand that business, Anthony.
Well, they do, but I knew that we had a RFP on the street, and so...
Yeah, I understand, I didn't know we did.
And we, yeah, so I, you know...
They want to be hand in hand with the RFP on the street, but see, the RFP on the street may be the marina itself, but they need to have something within there that, that the boating community would be, would want to make their destination.
Exactly.
But, going back, if we could, Paul, back to the lease issues, you know, and Bernard, and I'm going to really focus on you on this, you know, on a commercial lease, the landlord shifts the majority of the responsibility to the tenant, and I really do believe that that, even though we own the property, or the city, and an entity does, that the upkeep, maintenance, those, you're not writing these down.
You haven't asked a question.
Yeah, I'm letting him know, but he needs to write it down.
Bernard's not writing it down.
Nobody's writing it down.
It's recorded.
I just want to make sure that it's understood, I just want it to get understood, that, that when we're negotiating this lease, that, you know, a commercial lease, they're going to assume that responsibility, we're not coming in and putting in new air conditions, I mean, that's not our, it's not how it works, we're not going to maintain, do the maintenance that we've done in the past, perhaps, you know, it needs to be understood, you know, it's a commercial lease, and that with a commercial lease comes their responsibility as a tenant, because they're making the money to be there, and, and, so, and I'm also would like, Bernard, if it's possible, and Marcus, write this down, that we get, if we haven't gotten it yet, I'm curious, if you can find for us their leases that they have at their other properties, have they been, are they producing, oftentimes, a company like this comes in, and they may bring their own lease, and say, this is what, our lease, and this is what we want, the real question is, is what are the other cities municipalities producing? Are they producing a lease, and what are they? Contact Kansas City, see what their lease is, has, if they can, if they can send it to us without a confidentiality.
They built Kansas City.
Kansas City's what it's in.
Then maybe, then let's go Philly, or wherever else they are, let's go to the ones that haven't built it.
We're asking them to copy their general lease to us, they can send us that.
I think that, but I do want, I'm curious what other municipalities are doing with them, and even if they're not doing with Cordish, and let's check to see what they're doing with other similar companies, to see what they're pulling out, are they, and I'm also curious if they're phasing in their, how are they handling their escalations? What are the escalations that are normally done in these types of leases? I'm curious as to that, again, looking at the interior, you know, is it a 2%, 3%, 5%? What are the escalations, and over what term are the escalations? Is there an out, if it's a 50-year lease, I've heard rumors of those being thrown out, 25-year lease, is there an out earlier, if it's not working? So, I'm curious about that, again, looking at the lease terms, I'm sorry.
I would just say that, I was just going to say that, you know, they're in Baltimore, you know, with the...
Inner Harbor.
Right, so, they, they, they know how to respond to the boating community there, they...
Yeah, that would be true.
Right, so, but the piece I would, I would be more concerned about, you know, when we were talking about parking, I don't think we give up parking, that's just me, I just think that, you know, we start attracting people here, you're in an urban city, I don't care, within any major metropolitan city you go to, you pay for parking, we're not suburbia of Virginia Beach, we're north, and so, and so, I just think that, we want to maximize this opportunity, to make the load lesser on our citizens of this city, and so, if that, now, we have, after, after, on weekends and special events, we have special events parking, that's $5, you know, is what they charge in every garage, you know, so it's, it's consistent across the board, but the other part of that equation is, we want people to get outside there, sometimes it's $3, but we want people to get outside their cars, and use the light rail to come into the city, so it's two-fold, we want people, we want traffic, we want foot traffic, you know, so I don't, I just don't think we give up that parking, that's a, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to drive revenues up in the city, and so, that's a way that we, that's a piece that we keep, you know, so if they go to a place and buy one beer, but they pay $5 for parking, they got $5.
Can you just also give us an update on the leases that are presently held there? Because I know they said they would honor those, and I just was curious what those were, how long, and how they're...
They said they would keep all the places that were...
I know, I just want to know which ones they have.
Tommy, my question is about procedures, process from this point forward, because we have, we've seen a concept from them, you know, pretty drawings, and some, you know, with the recommendations, or conversations that we have next Tuesday, they go back to the drawing board, I guess, and come back with an, where do we go from here, what are the stuff, I know there was a perception, I guess, from an article that ran today, that people are trying, upset, that this isn't happening fast enough, but I think generally, we all want this to be done right, it's not that we, but I'm just, I don't understand where we're going with this from this point forward, because they're going to come in next Tuesday, or the following Tuesday, and have another presentation, are they going to show us what we've already seen, or are they going to take comments that are from today, and now try to implement that in another presentation to us?
I just go answer your questions.
I would, yeah, I would hope they would be responsive to what the manager puts down, after you refine some of our ramblings here, about what we think is important.
Right, yeah, right, I mean, and so, are we...
Well, they're going, they'll come in and make a presentation, and we'll be able to ask questions, we'll be able to make some comments, like this is what we would like to say.
Okay.
And I think that'll go on for a couple of hours, at some point, we'll then have to look at the... At some point, we'll then have to look at the manager and say, this is what we want you to deliver. And, you know, and then we'll probably, we'll have, obviously need to have, you know, a closed session to talk about terms and things like that would be, he'll start to negotiate something. And if we can make it work, we'll make it work. So, but it's probably two or three steps.
Is he putting a timeline on the negotiations after that? Are you 30 days of negotiation? What are you, whatever's the, okay.
Well, I don't know, 30 days is pretty tight.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I would say it does sound really tight. Bernard, I mean, what do you think, to close a deal like this?
Right, I would start off with a letter of intent with all of the terms. And so we knew we had agreement in principle, then we can move to the details of the lease, which will include the design review, have your approval, the design review commission, and not expect them to invest in design until after we have an agreement with them. And they impressed me as being ready to go, and I think we're ready to go. But I don't think there's any reason to put a time limit on it. I mean, if we're working along and succeeding and done quickly, great. But if we're working along and there's progress, I don't see why we would ever stop it.
Well, I think we have a legal obligation entered into this in good faith and to do a due diligence. It's appropriate. You know, you don't want to say, we're going to do it in 30 days, and we can't wrap it up that fast. Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
It's got to be.
It's thing we can just think we'll take months.
Right.
It seems like just by some complaints, that this was something that was going to be done in 30 days.
No.
And I don't want the public to think that this is something that's going to be done next month.
We may get to the end of the line and say, you know, we can't do.
Absolutely.
Okay. Terry has one question.
I just have one quick thing. Brett was good about telling us what our schedule is for school board nominations. So the nominations have to be in by when, the 12th?
June 12.
I just am curious, how are we blasting this out to civic leagues and people to know about this? Because, you know, it's not enough to just have a little square in the compass that says we're accepting that. Do we have, you know, we've been doing better. What's the plan?
I'll take some TV time while we're up here getting it out.
No, we can make, we'll go the extra mile.
Because we're missing part of the civic league cycle already, because, you know, the, the groups had met on the third week.
But this is the schedule, this happens every, every year to us.
And every year.
Can we ask for it last year? We'll get back to that. I want to go in a closed session, just very briefly with the council, to talk to you all real quickly about something. Marcus, don't worry. Everybody could hustle with us.
Marcus, don't, don't buy any of that. Unripe the bananas.